And it is open for anyone who would like to comment. If you would please come to the voting respect.
Hi, Kimberly Rappus, concerned Gilmer County citizen. In 2024, our milage was 5.5. And early this year, I received a notice of my estimated milage being at 5.33. And as I understand, standing here today, 5.178 mils is the actual rollback rate. And that rollback rate is the military rate. That would offset all increases in property tax value that would result from higher property tax valuations. This year, instead of rolling back to the 5.178 mils, you all don't want even hold the milage rate at 2024's rate, 5.5, which would still increase your taxes collected. You want it increased to 5.82 non, which would represent over a 12 and a half percent tax increase to every homeowner. Over the last year, over the last year, which means, you know, 12 and a half revenue increases per county. So it would cost us 12 and a half additional 10%. That's the additional revenue in your pockets. Fact is, our property taxes, our values have consistently increased year over year, which would be great. We want to sell our houses. And for those who want to stay here and live in our homes, especially those on a fixed income, that's a problem. This is all the more egregious, considering the board rejected HB 581 last year, which would have capped our property tax increases to 3%. Instead, we're seeing a 12 and a half percent increase.
Um, let me just, just for a second. When you say we're kept, your property taxes, 3%. Okay, make sure we're both on the same page. What we're saying is that the base rate of floating exemption could increase by no more than 3% per year.
As I understand it, it's 3% of valuation increase that can be taxed.
Actually, it's a code that's changed every year.
Teresa getting into that better than me, and I want the person to.
Well, actually, it's a code that's been changed every year, but it shouldn't exceed 3%. But, but what we're saying though, is the fixed, the floating exemption, that value would increase every year by no more than whatever this figure would be, 3% or less. Okay. One of the reasons that we objected to actually 581 is because the floating exemption that we already have in place does not have any increase in it. Therefore, it is better than if your, if your floating exemption, if your base is just, let's say 200,000, just pick a nice real figure, then that's what your tax is.
Forty percent, I think it's forty percent, yeah.
Okay, but, but your base, so it will be a certain amount of debt. With the floating exemption that you currently have, if your, if your property goes up by $30,000 this year, if your assessment does, your floating exemption will just increase 30,000 to the cover it. Now, that's what you have in place now. With HB 581, if your property increases by $30,000, your base will go up too, but there's a 3% or some percentage rate increase allowed in that such that the base that you, rate that you get on floating exemption that they propose will cost you more money than the base that you get on what you have already in place, because we don't allow that to increase.
Well, there's, there are restrictions that are on you, um, that you can increase so much.
Well, yeah, but we're not increasing any dollars right now.
That's not your doing, that's the state's doing.
That, you're right, they put exemptions on it that you don't increase so much.
Otherwise, it may be staying 20% this year.
No, 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 this is only on your floating exemption.
Okay.
It doesn't have anything to do with the military rate.
Got it.
This is your assessment. And you're right, they have restricted how much you, that can increase. We don't increase it at all. So if your base rate is 200,000, the state's 200,000, under actually 581, your base rate could be 210.
The end result of the, of HB 581 was going to represent a diminution, a diminution of tax income or revenue to the county or to all municipalities, which is why they were allowing this special local option sales tax to supplement county revenues.
Keep this in mind now. HB 581 is, is a catch-all for the entire 159 counties. It's not specific to any county, it's the state's solution generically for all 159 counties. There are a lot of counties in Georgia that HB 581 is going to be a real boon to those folks, because they don't have any kind of floating exemption in place at all now. So now they'll get whatever HB 581 gives them, assuming they don't have doubt. But there are situations, and we're one of, I don't know, maybe three or four in the state, that we implemented, we implemented this back in 2006. And while we implemented in 2006, does not have the stipulation that, that it can, we can increase it. So it's better than what HB 581 dictates.
Okay, let's assume, let's assume you're correct about that, let's assume it's better.
Oh, I know, but okay, we're looking at.
Um, we're still looking at 12 and a, over 12 and a half percent increase in property tax, actual real tax.
Okay, just, just as long as we understand that you're talking about the milage rate and not the.
Okay, whether the taxes come out through milage or assessments or any other formula, doesn't make a difference, because my tax rate is the same regardless of how you got there.
I read this morning that we're getting two tax increases this year, one on the milage rate, and one because our assessment went up. Totally, totally incorrect, these folks do not understand floating exemptions. So, yes, there is a tax increase in the milage rate, but it has zero to do with your assessment going up because you have the floating exemption.
Why are you, why are you looking at, instead of holding the milage rate at 5.5 from last year, or rolling back to 5.128, which is the rollback rate for this year, looking at increasing our milage rate to 5.829?
Okay, so you're asking a question. First of all, let's, let's understand that what you're looking at is a half mil increase, is not a half mil increase. If you look at the, um, bond milage rate that everybody pays, that decreased by a quarter of a percent. So.
Well, because we've overpaid into it for several years, I mean, that's, you know.
But what I'm saying is.
It's not like you all giving us a break, it's like we paid way too much for several years, and now you've got too much money in the bond account.
No, what we're doing is we're transferring that from an area where we can't use it to an area where we can. So now, what you're asking is, why do we feel like we need to do that? I believe you've been very critical of the fact that we don't have enough ambulances.
I've not, I've complained that there are several dilapidated ambulances sitting behind a fire station, 13 on 382.
Okay, there, there is a lot of complaints, we don't have enough ambulances. And I'm not critical of that, because the fact of the matter is, we don't. We have four ambulances that run nonstop every day. Uh, if a fifth call comes in, we have agree most with other counties. Uh, you know, we may have to ask Fanning, would you care if this, or recently, we've had to ask, um, Dawson County, if it was for you to handle this. It's not sufficient, we have growing population, move we like it or not.
Sir, we have, um, we have the seventh largest growing county in the state.
Yeah, I know, I know.
That didn't happen in a vacuum. The, the policies of this board and the planning and zoning, um, director, director of this past year, have, have enabled the growth, which has created the situation. So you all created the situation, you want us to fix with our tax.
We can't tell people you can't live here.
But you can, you could have created policies, listen, we, when we, all the community came out and said, hey, we don't want all these subdivisions to give them a county, we don't want the traffic, we don't want to lose the quality of life that we have here, we have something special. You all's answer was to give us a, negotiate a six-month moratorium and, and only on subdivisions over 25 units. And in that duration, in that timeframe, those six months, you all were supposed to change the ordinance to decrease, then to increase, um, lot, uh, acreage sizes and, and increase the restrictions put on development. But you all did none of that. See, and whether, just inaction, inaction is inaction.
Okay, whether you agree with the growth.
Well, I'm not done, wait, I'm not done, because then we have the short-term, I'm sorry, then we have the low-income housing people here on the board, who are going to represent thousands of more people moving into Gilmer. Stop looking at me like that, Karli. Um, thousands of new people who are going to be moving to this county with their cars, and they're going to be.
COVID's never issued.
No, but it's not, because all of these things are a compilation of why you all need more money.
We need.
And when you, and when you continue to grow the county, you continue to grow the government. And when you continue to grow the government, the government needs more money. When the government needs more money, you all come to look for us to pay.
The county is going to continue to grow, we cannot stop all the growth.
Controlled growth is a thing.
We actually do controlled growth. Well, you mentioned the laws have been approved there.
Please, please give me an example of how this county has controlled growth 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 last decade.
You have, you have mentioned the laws that have been approved, but there's several that were not approved.
I know that, I used to go to the planning and zoning meetings, and they all just get approved, so that's not true. There's only one, one instance where I can say that there was a, uh, development of, of impact to this community. That was rejected, that's simply because there was conflict of interest with John Marshall.
Okay, then we're totally incompetent because we allow growth.
We couldn't vote yes in favor, because he received a campaign contribution.
We're totally incompetent because we're allowing growth, but, but we are allowing.
It's not what I said, don't put words in my mouth. What I said was, you all are, are executing policy that encourages development. Why are we just today discussing impact fees? Do you know how many millions of dollars we could have been collecting over the last couple decades?
We've discussed impact fees for a year. We've discussed impact fees for a year.
For developers that built 12,000, please don't talk over me, I've got a limited period of time.
No, you don't, we're not, we don't have a blog on you. We're having a discussion.
I'm, I'm, I want you to hear me, because I've been at this, wasting my time talking to you all. I'm not going to stop, because somebody has to be a voice to the community. Because the only voices that I've heard so far that have any impact to this board are those who want more development and want to increase your revenue stream. And I'm speaking as a citizen of Gilmer County, saying, I'm the source of your revenue stream, okay? I don't derive an income from, or any kind of benefits, um, from your taxation. I, I don't. While there is a social contact for minimal, for, for, um, public services, public safety, I, I can agree that that's necessary. But the number of units that we require, the number of officers that are necessary, the number, as the number of people increase here, the number of, the amount of services and the cost thereof increases as well. So that's your responsibility. See, we hired you, see, you all are supposed to be Republicans. Republicans are, and I say supposed to be, because I have my doubts, but, um, small government, low taxes. Y'all haven't gotten that, gotten that right, you all grown government, increased our taxes. And the leadership here has been, has exemplified very socialist conduct in that we think that you all believe that housing, or two-thirds of you, believe that housing, affordable housing is a right. And you have used your time, your time here on this board, and one of you on more than one term, has used your time on this board to increase the number of people who would be moving to this community and increase the number of low-income housing units that would be placed here. Now, right now, we're not experiencing the backlash from them, but it's coming. Soon as they, those units start coming up, as soon as the, 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 um, Georgia communities gets all, jumps over their last hurdles to get the bonds released, they're, they're going to be a go. And there's no turning back. And I just wanted to be on record here, that the three of you, and you, or Parker before you, are all responsible for the change in, for the change that is coming. Your policies, your taxation, the, oh, the rapid growth that you've allowed to continue, that is unmanageable. And now you're scrambling to kind of figure out a way to pay for all the services that all these people are going to require. And you want to incre, and you want to further penalize those who've been here. And many of these folks have been here for their whole lives and multiple generations that are going to have to pay for, um, all the droves of people who are coming in here. I tried to, to encourage you all to listen to the citizen review, that we don't want what you all are nurturing. And it's not happening on its own, it's not. When you build thousands of apartment units, you're going to have thousands of people moving, move here. That's not for people here. Did you, did you look at it, at the, the day that came out, our, our median income is 70,000. Karli, I mean, estimated 80,000, and maybe 80,000 or more is median income. We're not a poor county anymore. And wealthy people are moving here because of, because of all of the new, I don't know, but there's no impact fees. There's no cost to, uh, there's a, the cost to move here, you've made it so cheap for them, and amazingly, so expensive for us. And we're, you're doing it on our backs, and I'm just asking you to please, to please stop that. Um, there's plenty of money coming into you all, let me just, I'll finish up. Besides property taxes, you have lost, you have sploshed. And so you have additional revenues, plus you've got the lodging tax, the increase, 3% increase in lodging taxes, which is discretionary money you guys can put and spend wherever you want to, from, as I understand. So you've got a large revenue stream coming in. Last year, you tried to pin us with another chief loss, another 1%, and trying to convince the community that this is all expensive, that it can be paid for by tourists and visitors. Unless I've checked, all of us go to the grocery store and buy things here. So this doesn't just impact them, every 1% impacts every one of us. So we're, you're looking for 12%, 12 and a half percent more in our property taxes. You're looking for us to, as I understand, looking at the agenda, you've, you're gonna, you're kicking around another 1% somehow to negotiate something between the cities of Eljay and East Eljay to increase the 1% in one way or another.
Okay, let's be clear on that, because I also read that, that not only are we wanting an increase in the property tax, but we're asking for a new sales tax. We are not, we're asking to extend the existing sales tax that was put in place to pay for the bonds, uh, for the courthouse, the jail, the library, the animal shelter, all the stuff that was built in 2005 to 2008 timeframe. Now, if.
You just said we have a surplus there, so.
No, 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 we have a surplus for the chiophs. These were, there's like about four different sets of bonds that were on there. And when I say we have a surplus, what I'm saying is, sploshed is bringing in enough money to pay for that particular set of bonds and a little bit more. We got three or four other sets of bonds that we got to pay for too, to reach that four plus million dollars a year. Those are also paid by the sploshed, sploshed is bringing in enough money to pay for those. What we're asking, since we have another five to six years of this, because this was a 25-year deal when it was put in place, and splosh was intended to pay for it. So what we're asking is, we would like for this not to expire and to extend it out all the way to the end of the fleet, uh, where these bonds are, are coming due. So this is not a new thing, this is just a continuation of what we've got right now, primarily for the purpose of paying for our bonds.
Well, I'm looking at the, um, Georgia Sales and Tax Revenue Chart for 2025 from the Department of Revenue. Now, I look, I'm looking at Cherokee County, do you even realize they're paying 6%? So they're 4% state, 1% splosh, and 1%.
I know you're not trying to, to compare us to Cherokee County.
Well, I am in that, you're, you're charging 1% of more already.
If you've got a million people, you can afford to do that.
And you're already aiming to bring a million people here, so you all can do that.
Is that where I'm at?
Because only I'm afraid that you wouldn't decrease the, um, local option sales taxes, I'm afraid that would continue.
You are aware, I'm assuming, that the local, revenue that comes in from the local option sales tax can only be used off of state property taxes.
That's the agreement.
Well, that's the fact, that's the state law.
Well, that's sploshed.
That's the state law.
What about sploshed?
The sploshed is to pay for the bonds I just.
So you have bond money, you have a rollback money.
We don't have bond money, that was spent 20 years ago.
But you collect it every year.
To pay for the four million dollar debt service.
Well, yeah, we pay that, right, that's our money sitting in that, that account, any overs there is our money. And so you want that money to reallocate them, plus you'd want us to pay them.
Kimberly, you're not listening to me.
I don't think you're listening to me. What I'm saying to you is, I'm, as a citizen of Gilmer County, I have experienced your policies of growth, uncontrolled growth. I'm not saying you can stop growth, I'm saying uncontrolled growth. Your policies of enabling and encouraging developers to build in excess of 12,000 lots that are sitting vacant, that have run through this county, and then you, your stamped approval that requires your approval to build and develop, okay? We're talking about, um, a low-income apartment, apartment complexes in multiple places in the county that you all have put in place. And I know you're looking at it like, these are all tax revenue streams that we're planning for in the future. They're not going to bring you tax revenues in the future.
That's not the way we're living in.
Okay, well, they will, I mean, I mean, I don't know, you don't know that.
They're going to support expenditures and they're going to increase revenue.
Okay, they're not expenditures when you're getting tax revenues that come in from, there's no cost to county.
They're expenditures, but we have, right, the services.
Property that belongs to somebody else.
That's why we need another ambulance, that's why we need more firemen.
Right, that's what I'm saying to you. We're agreeing, every time you do that, you increase the number of ambulances, the number of fire trucks, the number of staff, the number of government is growing because of those policies.
You're exactly right, but you cannot say that, uh, we're doing this for increased revenue, and then on the other hand, acknowledge that what's coming in is going to cost us more than expenditures.
Both are true, both are true, both are true.
If the expenditures cost more than the revenue stream, we're not doing it to increase revenue.
At the, well, the budget that I've looked at, standing here, is produced, shows that you got, you all have a mandate to balance the budget. So you have the funds, it's not like you're looking for money.
The mandate comes from this Board of Commissioners, but, but prior to, to January 2015, the budget consisted of several hundred thousand dollars more in expenditures than revenues, and I don't know how they were looking to cover that, but that mandate's coming from us.
Okay, so you put a mandate to balance your budget.
Yes.
On that comes from yourselves.
Yes.
Okay, I expect you all to abide by the rules that you suffered yourselves.
Every budget's balanced.
Every budget is balanced, every, every, uh, renowned. But, you know, Ryan is asking for his money back from what he loaned you all last year, and, and the Parks and Recs got, folks are looking for all their money, their money to build their Parks and Rec facility, and you've got to now pay for all the, the facility over there, over, uh, to all to stretch your legs out there on Industrial Boulevard, and continue on and on. Your policies, your behaviors are increasing costs and the need for revenues, which in turn necessitates you all increasing our milage, not holding it steady, or not holding it back, so that we can continue to fund that. Because why else are you raising milage rates if there aren't increasing costs? And you just said, the costs are increasing, right?
No, they're increasing.
Inflation is not going up, the cost of materials and goods are steady, have been steady for a number of months, so that excuse is more now.
Inflation wore us out before we ever.
Before, I'm talking about, but you had a balanced budget.
Of course we have a balanced budget.
Okay, so, so you weren't, and you're all working in a deficit, because of how they wore you out, you figured out a way to work within it.
We, we didn't give the raises that we needed to give, and we've been criticized and surrounded for that.
Sir, you've created multiple new positions in the last few years, and you have, um, increased, you have increased salaries. I have sat there in the meetings, and I have seen that, so that's not true either.
We did 3%.
I don't mean, you mean to tell untruths, I, I think that you're failing to tell the whole truth.
Wait a minute, Kimberly, you criticized us for, for losing firemen, for covering.
No, I don't.
I'm.
If I was a fireman, I wouldn't want to work up here, I mean, I'm, you know.
I'll keep Gilmer, girl.
I have never criticized our fire department.
No, 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 I'm not saying you criticize the fire department. I'm saying you criticize the Board of Commissioners, because we have so many vacancies, because we're not paying them properly.
No, what I said is you all have an issue, and not because you don't pay them properly. I don't know what your issue is, all I know is there, there were multiple vacancies last year.
Well, if the issue is they can make more money somewhere else.
Well, I mean, we're a stepping stone, nobody comes to Gilmer County on the ladder of success and stays here.
Well, it doesn't stop.
That's ridiculous. Um, but, but it was just, I was just pointing out that there were multiple vacancies. I'm not complaining about vacancies in government, we need less government, I'm not everyone. I'm, I'm concerned about public safety 100%, because every one of us has experienced a vacancy in our lives. I, I don't mind paying for a fire truck that will save somebody's life on the third story of a, of a hotel, I mean, still, I don't mind that. Um, because that serves, I may be in that hotel window, right? What doesn't serve me, all those subdivisions that Bill Holt is building, all of this county, ten, thousands and thousands of, of, of lots that he's never been charged single impact fee for. And you all have allowed that, you're coming to us to look for money from us. Why don't you look into, to hold the other developers for that money?
You have been coming to these meetings for a long time, you should know, that we've been working, trying to get impact fees for over a year now.
What's the other?
The state has very stringent requirements for impact fees. We have had to hire an outfit out of Savannah that specializes in getting outfit, getting impact fees for governments. We signed a contract for them, then we waited for three, four months.
When, when was that contract signed?
Oh, I can tell.
Last year?
Yeah.
Okay, not 10 years ago?
No, no, last year.
So you didn't start the ball wrong 10 years ago?
But we waited, we waited, we waited, we hadn't heard anything. So finally, I sent David an email, you know, what's going on, he contacted them. I said, we were having email issues, we didn't get a signed contract, we apologize, we'll get on the right away. And then we actually have a meeting, I think it's the 19th next Tuesday, at 9:00 AM, special call meeting for impact fees.
Yeah, I leave a lot of money coming in, you can desperate about those impact fees, you need the 12 and a half percent. I'm just saying, your spending in the, in the, in the recent years has, has created a problem for you, and you want to pass that down to us. And I'm not, I'm not willing to, I'm not going down easily. I'm not going to take it to the smile, sir, I mean, I, with all due respect, I, you know, I, I appreciate you as a leader. Um, but this is, I mean, the consistent increase in revenues, year over year over year, and it's never enough. And it has nothing to do at this point with the time to inflation, because it's been steady. And now, we're out of excuses for why, and I think, I feel like I've heard excuses today, though, why you're going to, you're, why you're considering raising our milage rate. Thank you.
I'm going to clarify that her comment of the thousands of low-income units that are coming.
No, thousands of people and hundreds of units.
Hundreds of units, okay, let's not, I don't think that you said, but there are 126 units, and that counts mine, possibly our eight, have it for humanity causes, so.
In one, I'm sorry, you're going to talk to me, I'm going to come up and respond. You know darn well, there are multiple low-income apartment locations in this county, and each one of them is going to have, is, is, is going to have more than one person in each one of those units. And each one of those units, if assuming it's a, it's a family that's struggling and that needs a fourth of housing, you're going to have two adults and two kids in each one, that's four people, and two vehicles. So let's not, let's not make little of the impact those humans are going to have on our streets.
I'm just talking, there are 50 units in one area, one subdivision, and 50 in the other.
That's Coria Street, so let's, let's talk about this. Coria Street, 50 units. New beginnings, sound is that, 30.
28.
28?
I believe it's 28.
Um, the Steve, the Kuzawati property, Steve West property, it's the Georgia communities, that's another 50.
50.
To start with. Um, so we're looking at 150, just in three locations. Now, we all know that Howard Simmons and Big.
128, 128, but sure.
Right, fine, 128.
You like to.
No, no, let's go with 128, let's go with 128. We already know that 85 Yukon is a hotspot, they want that, they want to put townhouses, apartments, senior living, this, I mean, these are, this is, that's just one other location, and you've got Howard Simmons, and you've got Bravo Two on that, you know, there, your Ender Beavers over there. And you've got all the Risen property out there beyond the hospital. And there's, and then you have the Connor property there, and then you have the Donut property. So let's not pretend like it ends with the three units that Georgia Communities already has in the pipeline. The only reason there aren't one in the pipeline is because they have to get the funding from the state to get their corporate buffer.
Just wanted to clarify the facts.
Me too.
Okay, anybody else? If there is no one else, have a few comments I want to make.
You come in.
Oh, come on in.
I'm Laurel Johnson from Cherry Law, and I just want to say I know how deeply, um, uh, re, deeply you all are concerned regarding the tax base in this county, and how, um, I know you are not anxious or. or, um, anticipating with the glee at any, at, at all raising taxes. That you're doing it very thoughtfully, and I appreciate that very much. I know that you're doing it because of your thoughtful, uh, respect for the needs of this county. No one wants to raise taxes, you do not want to raise taxes, and I understand that very much. But you're raising these taxes in a minimal way, and we will still be one of the lowest, uh, mileage rates in the state, especially when you take out, um, those, the, the T squads, the counties that have T squads. So when you, uh, look at mileage rates, uh, not counting T squads, we are still going to be an extremely low tax rate in the count, in the state. Um, we don't need a fifth ambulance unless you have somebody in your household or that's dear to you, that is potentially dying. Um, you don't need fire service unless your house is at risk, or your neighbor's house is at risk. You know, you don't need good roads unless you want to, uh, spend, you don't wanna spend a lot of money on car maintenance. Uh, you know, you don't need recreation in this county, uh, for teenagers unless you don't think teenagers can't find anything better to do, and you, we know teenagers will find things that are less, um, better to do than recreation, because teenagers always find something to fill up their time. And what they will find to fill up their time, they result in additional law enforcement costs and additional costs to the justice, um, system. So I, I appreciate your commitment to the quality of life that we have in this county. I know that you are not trying to pump up this county, to draw, make this county a huge population. I don't think the people that, uh, sell their, uh, property, um, are simply trying to draw additional population into this county. I think people that sell their, uh, their farms to, uh, developers are, are typically people who have farmed for a long time and are now retiring and, uh, find that is the best use for their property and, uh, funds their retirement and are happy to do so. Cause there are always two hot, two sides to every sales that goes on in, uh, in any kind of development sale. And, um, and I know that you understand this, and I know that you want to maintain the quality of life and, and value the things that make this county a very special place to live. You don't want it to become a huge populace, you don't want it to become another Canton, another Cherokee County. You don't even want it to become, um, you know, another Pickens County. You want it to maintain the values that have become, um, important to Gilmore County. And, um, I just wanna appreciate that, um, the job that you were trying to do, uh, that you do want to create opportunity and housing for the people that do live here, that work here, that grow up here, that graduate from school here, that go off, uh, and get an education and wanna come back here and raise their families here and, um, try to live here. So we, we want to make that affordable, we wanna make it livable, we wanna make it, uh, a practical opportunity for the future in Gilmore County. And, um, I know that that's what you're trying to do. I think the actual increase, the tax amount increase for the average homeowner is a relatively small amount, um, I'm not sure exactly what it is. I think I, I heard one that it would, uh, that on average it would be about fifty dollars a year. Um, maybe you could clarify that for me?
When you take the, uh, the increase in the mileage rate and the decrease in the Geo Bond rate, only two hundred and fifty thousand on our house, the additional, uh, tax would be twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five dollars?
The net of the two.
Say that last sentence again, please.
The net of the two, the increase in the M and O and the decrease in the Geo Bond would, uh, would make it an increase of twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five dollars?
On a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house.
Thank you, I appreciate that, that's really all I wanted to say, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, if there is nobody else, then I do have a few comments to add to that.
I wanna start by saying that this is something, and I'm sure you've all heard, I've heard it a number of times, that this is a thankless job. That's not entirely true. Um, some people do tell us to depreciate what we do, and it's always very welcome when you hear something like that. But for the most part, I think that applies. Most of the people don't know what we do, why we do it, don't wanna know, don't care until it comes down to whether or not their road can be paved or what their taxes are gonna be. And as a result of that, and, and I'll be the first one to say that I think social media is probably the most destructive thing we've ever seen in this country, but every single day, somewhere on social media in Gilmore County, I know all of us, but I'm, I'm, this is all I'm speaking for myself here. Um, I'm taxed over my ethics, my greed, and my incompetence. Now, I let that pretty much just kinda fall off my back, it's the best part of the job, and I understand that. Um, I really hardly ever go on Facebook anymore, uh, I don't, I don't need to read it, I've read it all before, I've heard it all before. Every now and then, but my wife does, every now and then she'll say, oh, you gotta see this one. And, uh, there's been a time or two when, when it's been so egregious that I felt like I have to respond, and that never works out well. One of them will learn on this and on that. But for the most part, I just stay off of it. On social media, I am a corrupt politician that only cares about money, that doesn't maintain roads, doesn't pay employees enough to keep them, caters to those with power and influence. On social media, we can have good roads and recreation facilities if I would just stop stealing off of money. I wanna address a few things that have, a few questions that have come up, and seem to be repeated quite a bit. We need to have an audit of county finances, when was the last time that we had a comprehensive audit of county finances? That seems to be our recurring thing, particularly in the last few days here. Well, the last time we had a, a comprehensive audit of county finances was two thousand and twenty-five. We have one every single year. The independent auditors come here and they spend weeks with Sandy. Over a period of months, they spend weeks with Sandy, weeks at a time with Sandy. They go through receipts, they go through revenue streams, they look at our practices, they get it all. And they give us, by June thirtieth of every year, they give us the, a comprehensive audit. Those results are public. So we have the, the auditor come to our meeting and give us overview here in the meeting. Anybody that wants the whole thing just has to ask, and they can have it. Uh, we're not trying to hide anything from the auditors, like we could, or from the public. If we paid higher wages, we wouldn't lose firemen, I hear that a lot. Probably true. We are criticized for not paying more, while at the same time being criticized for taxing in order to pay anything at all. I hear they didn't even say what the extra money will be used for. Well, primarily the extra money's gonna be used for that fifth ambulance. Now, we've got an ambulance ordered, and we have money set aside to pay for it already. When I approached the fire department and said, we need to put this in a rotation as an additional unit. What we've been doing, we've been trying to rotate with about one ambulance per year. We had Ford on the road, and so what we would do is when we got the new ambulances, whatever their oldest of the Ford would be put to the back of the line as a, a, uh, emergency spare in case one Ford broke down. What I said with this next one is, I don't wanna do that. Leave them all in place, I want this to be ambulance number five. And what they said was, well, we're happy to do that, just understand that you're talking about a million dollars in expenditures. Well, ambulance was about, what, two hundred and sixty or seventy thousand, so where are you coming up with a million? Coming fourteen people, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, to man in ambulance, not just people, EMTs and paramedics. Estimated million dollars a year for that. They're right, you know, I mean, that's why I go to the fire department and say, here's what I wanna do, and that's why they tell me, okay, here's what it's gonna take, it's gonna take a million dollars. We felt that it was worth it. We, when I say worth it, we're at a point where we don't just wanna have a fifth ambulance in the rotation. We desperately need a fifth ambulance in the rotation. Now, you can say it's because we were irresponsible and let us, let too much growth come in. Um, you can say it's for anything, any reason you wanna say. Fact of the matter is, we don't have enough ambulances on the road, and we're having to call out too many times to our neighbors for help, uh, with the agreements that we have in place. We need that fifth ambulance desperately. So when people say we don't even, we don't even say what it's for, understand that the money this will raise will just about cover what it's gonna take to add that fifth ambulance. Because this is not gonna raise tremendous amount, this is one quarter, one mil increase. John gave some figures for a two hundred thousand dollar house. I'd like to amplify that just a little bit and say, and, and y'all have a copy, these are on the table. If your assessed value is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, might be a little high for most people, but it's probably more realistic than a two hundred thousand dollar house. If your assessed value is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the overall net increase in your property taxes this year as a result of what we're doing will be seventy-five dollars. I'm not making light of seventy-five thou, of seventy, seventy-five dollars. But on a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, that's not what you're calling a, a greedy kind of a increase. So when they say, you didn't say what it's for, the little bit that this will generate for us is primarily gonna be for that fifth ambulance. They're asking for a new sales tax being sploshed along with the tax increase, and we discussed that a little bit already, this is not a new sales tax. It's a continuation, what we're asking for is a continuation of the sales taxes already in place that's set to expire here in a year or so. Um, and as I mentioned, the primary purpose of that, and there's a little leftover, and we use that to pay roads and so forth. Uh, but the primary purpose of that splosh is to pay the bonds that were committed twenty years ago with a twenty-five year lifespan of a little over four million dollars per year, is what our debt service is on that, that's something that counties around us don't have. Uh, when I made the difficult decision to shut down the swimming pool because I felt that it was dangerous and people went nuclear on that, uh, one of the people in the town hall meeting asked me, why, why do other counties have new pools if we don't? Now, I told him I would commit to building a new pool, we just couldn't do it right then, of course, I'm a politician, nobody believes that. Um, and my response to that was very simply, that they don't have to pay four million dollars a year uh, toward a debt service. I could build a new swimming pool every year, we didn't have to pay that. Now, I wanna hasten when I say that, because it sounds like I'm being critical of that, I'm not. I don't, I thought there were too many fire stations built at that time that weren't needed, but with that one exception. Pretty much everything that was built had to be built, courthouse already been condemned. Now, I'm not sure we had to build, well, we did build it, but on the other hand, we've already filled it up, so. Um, the jail was at the point of being condemned. Uh, the animal shelter, you just have to see where it used to be to believe it. Um, the things that were done, for the most part, had to be done. If I was being critical of that, my criticism would be that we waited to do it until everything had to be done at once. But even with that, we know, we knew the courthouse was on its last legs for a long time. The county didn't have money for any courthouse, I mean, towns were a lot tougher back then than they are now. So we're gonna have to make it last a little longer. The jails needs to be replaced, but we're just gonna make it last a little longer. You can only do that for so long, and it caught up with people in the two thousand and five, two thousand and six timeframe. Now, you can't make these things last a little longer, and they all gotta be replaced at once. So I'm not being critical that these bonds were issued, or what the commissions did back then. I am gonna say that I would like for us not to get into a position where we have to have that hit us again. And the key to that is to replace and maintain things as, as it needs to be done as you go along. Now, part of that is to, do you really think we just bought her, we're issues, they used building, we just bought? You know, I keep hearing you didn't need it, you didn't need it, you didn't need it, the people saying you didn't need it, really don't even know what's going on with it, and I'm sorry, but they don't. I've got folks, the UTA folks, four H and, and, uh, farmers folks out at the proper show building. For years, I had to find somewhere else for them to be, and didn't have anywhere else. Um, that's one of those situations where the building is just not worth what it'll take to bring it up to space. Um, but we, and we had to find a place for them. I had to tell the, um, civil aviation folks that you can't have the upper floor at the airport anymore. We'll let you come have your meetings here, but you can't have that because we've gotta put our EMH apartment there. Cause I had to get them out of the progress road building as well. Um, we are hiring people, the county is growing, just along with everything else. We were trying to hire more fire, we have hired more firemen, or at least we've had, we've opened more fireman positions. We have trouble filling them, but we, we've hunted. Um, we have doubled the size, since I've been here, we've a little more than doubled the size of the road department. Um, the county is growing. I've hired people and I have no place to put them, I need them, I need to give them an office, I'll have one in courthouse for them. Um, so there's that, we, we have to use the warm, the civic center for a warming center. Now, I know, you know, I'm supposed to be a conservative and I'm supposed to be, to look at these folk. to look at these folks and say, hey, you're on your own, you know, you need to look after yourself. Well, I'm not there. If it gets down seventeen degrees here, I mean, we got folks that we need to get them somewhere to spend the night. The civic center has that place, but it's not a proper place for it. Because we have to boot them out at seven o'clock in the morning. It's built through a deadline, cold at seven o'clock in the morning. But we have other, other commitments for that civic center. We need a, a warming center. For, as long as I've been here, the sheriff is telling me that he needs to be able to have office people in one room. It's not an absolute essential, but it would have been nice. So, what I've been basically doing, and when I say I remember, I'm just speaking for me. I should say what we've been trying to do, but I'm just speaking for me. What I've been trying to do is make some dominoes fall. I need somewhere to put the sheriff's people. If I had that, I could move the warming center to the patrol division. If I had that, then I could have a place for the civil engine, the civil uh arbitral. Because those are two entities that would not conflict in the use of a building. I can uh, I can, and we are moving the uh health department. I don't know how many out here are aware of this, but the health department's in the process now, moving into the building that we've just purchased. They'll take the right side of the first floor. They'll leave that building vacant. And we'll move the UGA folks from the progress road building into where the health department folks used to be. So, we're making the dominoes fall. It's the way that I I put it. But to do that, you've got to have that one place first of all that you can start moving people to. So, this is one of those things that uh we need to do now rather than wait until we have to do this along with a whole bunch of other stuff. So, that's, that's just part of that plan. I hear that Charlie lied about the floating exemption so he could opt out of HB five eighty-one. I've tried to explain, I think not very successfully, that what we have in place is better than what HB five eighty-one mandates. Now, HB five eighty-one was made for a hundred and fifty-nine counties. It wasn't made with Gilmore County in mind. It applies more to some counties than to other counties. For us, it applies basically hardly at all. We have better than what HB five eighty-one provides already. So to me, it was no right or no doubt, but you know, HB five eighty-one mandates a floating exemption, and they opted out. So they're just greedy and want more money from us. No, we just already have something better in place. But people, it's, floating exemption is a, is a complicated topic. People don't really understand it. I've had people call me up and say, prove it to me, and so I pull the last three or four of their property tax statements, and we go over them. And I can show them that, okay, for two thousand and twenty-one, you paid more than you paid in two thousand and twenty-four to the county. Now, what people don't take into effect when they tell me, my, my, my property taxes have doubled. They haven't doubled for the county. I can't address whether or not they doubled for the school board, but that's the other, that's the other entity. The school board right now is about three quarters. If you're, if you're not at over sixty-five, it's about three quarters of the taxes that you pay. And if you pay four thousand dollars in property taxes, you don't look at that and say, well, the county got nine thousand dollars for that, or a thousand, I mean, nine hundred or a thousand, whatever it is. They call me up and say, I just paid four thousand dollars for my county taxes, and you need to come pay my road. You didn't pay four thousand dollars to county government taxes. Nobody makes that distinction. What I can say is speaking for county government taxes, most people, everybody that has challenged me on it, and we've looked at so far, paid more taxes to the county in two thousand and twenty-one than they paid to the county in two thousand and twenty-four. And that's even though their, their assessments skyrocketed. That's where the floating exemption comes in. I hear that we're having two increases this year. We've talked about that, one from the military, one from higher assessment. People understand the floating exemption. It's never enough. Oh, if I've heard that once. It's never enough. Average home price in Gilmore County is around four hundred thousand dollars. And we've talked about what that would be. For a five hundred thousand dollar home, it would be about fifty more dollars. So you know, it's another one of those situations where people don't take the time to inform themselves. They just hear taxes. There was one person who said, we need to, this, this was somebody who was talking about when we're going to get an audit, we need to comprehend about it. They said, we need somebody to come in and compare Gilmore County to the counties around us. And I thought it was really interesting, and somebody came in behind them and said, oh, no, no, no. You don't want that. We did that way back when, and it didn't fare well for us, and it wound up costing us more money. Well, that person had it right. You don't want to compare Gilmore County to the surrounding counties, except in maybe a venue in terms of property taxes. We are, is it the sixth lowest county?
To be clear, we're the sixth lowest at this time, uh when you take out the counties that have the sploß.
Okay. So, to, for an apples to apples comparison.
Yes.
We are the sixth lowest county of a hundred and fifty-nine counties in the state of Georgia. Now, if you want to fact check us on that, go to the Department for every new website. From there, you can pull up everything every county pays. What you're going to have to do is, as you're looking at other counties, is some of them have an M and O of this amount, but they have a fire district of this amount. They have a public safety district, whatever, of this amount. Those things have to be added together to, for an apples to apples comparison, because we don't have those. It all comes out of our M and O. So, you'll have to do a little calculating. We've done it, and we're the sixth lowest. What I hear, they just want more and more, and it's, they're just greedy. That's one that rilets me most of all, because I'm the one that's taking, getting telephone calls from people. I don't care if somebody's road gets paved, honestly, if it get right down to it. I'm, I'm talking about for me personally. You know, I've never heard of this road. I'm never going to drive on it. Why is my, I'm really upset at this road? Well, I'm upset because it's my job to see that it gets paved. That's the biggest call I get. We want more road paving. Everybody has their particular thing. Some people would tell me, if you'll just stop putting so much money into recreation, you can pave more roads. Recreation folks want a new twelve to fifteen million dollar sports complex. I'm not supposed to call it that, but that's what it is. And what do I hear from them? Two things. First of all, we're willing for you to raise our taxes for this. Well, that's, y'all are, but maybe not everybody else. But the second thing is, if you just quit paving so many roads, you could build this for us. I get calls from the animal shelter all the time. We had a really good uh donation for the animal shelter, million and a half dollars. That's, that's pretty significant. Problem is, it's not significant enough to build expansion. We don't have another couple of million right now to put to it, put with it, to do that. So, the first thing I hear is, what happened to that money? Well, that money is sitting in an account all to itself. It can't be used for anything else. People assume that we can just pay roads with it, and it's gone, but it's not. It's sitting there. What I hear from the animal shelter folks is, and I, this is not, I'm, I'm not making this up now. This is the honest guy's truth. What I hear from them is, if you just quit spending so much money on roads and recreation, you could expand the animal shelter. Everybody has their thing, and they only care about their thing for the most part. And they all want more. Whoever it is, if your road, if roads are your thing, you want more paving. If the animals, if the animal shelter is your thing, you want expansion. If recreation is your thing, you want sports complex. Everybody has what they want, and nobody's really getting everything that they want. Nobody. Their people aren't getting their sports complex. The animal shelter hasn't been expanded yet. We're working on it. Now, we told the recreation folks, we're willing to build what you want. At that time, we were thinking three or four million dollars. We hadn't even thought about twelve or fifteen. We told them, we're willing to, to, to build what you want. We see the value of it. It'd be a good thing. We'll do it the same way we did the swimming pool. We'll put back money in the budget every year. It's like a little savings account. We did that with the pool until we had saved up enough money to, to build a pool. And we're doing that with sports complex. Every year, we put back money in the budget to build up, and someday we'll have enough to build one. Now, these are the things people want. The things that are according to them that they need. At the same time, they want to pay less, not more, less. If you don't believe me, just go on social media and take a look. It seems to me, you know, I hear that they're taxing us to death. Assessments are ridiculous. Well, assessments are the same all over the state. It's not just Gilmore County. In fact, I'm going to venture to say probably the same all over the United States. All I care about is more and more money. And for the solutions that I hear, and I heard it tonight, but I've already put it on my little notes here, so I'm, it's my first time I've heard it. Too many people are moving here. You know, don't let so many people move here. Stop building McMansions, you know? I mean, builders only want to build a billion dollar houses. Well, if I was a builder, that's what I'd want to build too. You know, if the billion dollar houses are selling as fast as you can build them, and you're a builder, what else are you going to build? I'd rather build one billion dollar house than five, two hundred thousand dollar houses, if I'm a builder. But they build where the demand is. You can buy an acre and a half of land and put something as small as five hundred square feet on. I hear you don't allow many homes. Well, five hundred square, that's pretty many to me. But uh, you know, there is that option. We hear you need to eliminate the over sixty-five school exemption. We hear don't even think about touching the over sixty-five school exemption. We hear we need affordable workforce housing, but don't allow apartments. If you do allow, don't let them be the high-end ones because that defeats the purpose. If you do allow, don't let them be the low-end ones. We don't want that. That's all on my notes, and those are not very popular sentiments, I know. And I'm fanning, I know that as well, but it's been a long time coming. People, you've got three hardworking folks up here. They're doing the absolute best that they can trying to satisfy thirty-two thousand different needs and wants. We're trying to pare that down to what the real essentials are, and right now, those real essentials are an ambulance. And we're doing what we need to do to see that that ambulance is in place for somebody that may be having a stroke or heart attack. And we're, we'll take the for it, and that's all I got to say.
Well, so, Jim.
Amy.
If anybody else has any comments to make, you can make them. Otherwise, we'll go ahead and close this meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.